I'd like to bring the meeting over please. As usual, welcome. As usual, we'll start with a public comment. Anybody has a public comment they'd like to make? Just raise your hand, I'll recognize you. Come to the podium, face us like this, please, and state your case. You'll have three minutes. So, do we have anybody? Oh, alright, let's move on. Larry Kenberg.
I'm here tonight to introduce Kelsey Goodwin, who has applied for the position on the Rec. Commission, which, if you approve her, will give us a full commission again.
Why don't you tell us a little bit about you?
Tell us a little bit, yeah.
We moved to Lee two years ago. My husband was in the Army, and we chose New Hampshire to move to when he got out. We have three children under the age of five, and all of them have special needs. I want to join the Rec. Committee. That way, I can be a part of organizing, like, different activities for all families to be included in. I feel like it's hard for families with little kids or special needs to get out and be part of the community, so I want to have some input on that.
When do you get off the crutches? Three kids.
I don't know.
That's a little tough.
Yeah.
Okay. I move to approve a full three-year membership appointment to Kelsey Goodwin to serve on the Recreation Committee. Can I get a second? Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Good, there you are.
Congratulations, welcome.
Thank you, by the way, for your time.
When's your next meeting? Next year.
Next?
You were waiting to say that?
I have been, John.
Mr. Steve Bullock, supervisor.
Evening.
Evening.
Alright, so the first one was the overtime holiday policy. As you're well aware, we've got snow, and a good amount of it. The week of Thanksgiving, Warren and Peter worked nine hours on Monday, sixteen and a half hours on Tuesday, thirteen hours on Wednesday, and then had two holiday days. They did not get any overtime for coming in at 10:30 at night and working straight through. And I was here to ask if the policy might be changed about the hours work part to exclude holidays from it. Because where the Highway Department's different from Fire and Police is, we're not scheduled to work those days. It's not our choice, it's a holiday. So, those guys come in and work all those hours, and they just, they get paid, there's regular pay for it. They really don't get much of an incentive, I don't believe, to wake up at 2:00 in the morning and come get the roads ready for the traveling public. So, they end up not getting fourteen and a half hours of overtime. And for Warren, that amounted to $166.75, and for Peter, it was $159.50 that they did not get. And when you add in the Social Security and the over, or the retirement, and the Medicare that the town adds into it, the total for both was $388.34. If the policy gets changed, I'd like to see it for the whole, for the whole year, but if it can't be for the whole year, I'd sell for, like, November 1st to April 1st, which is essentially the winter maintenance season. I mean, if you guys want to talk about it, it doesn't have to be a decision made tonight, but it's just...
No, I'm just trying to get it, kind of get it straight in my mind, about what's happening. They're coming in... They worked five days that week.
No, they worked three, because they had Thursday and Friday off on the holiday.
Okay, okay. Thursday and Friday were the holiday, they worked the other days. And during those three days, they worked...
Thirty-eight and a half hours.
Thirty-eight and a half hours. Got you.
Julie, have you had any comment?
Um, no. Again, as he alluded to, the, our policy says that the only way that you get overtime is for hours actually worked. So, it excludes holidays, sick, vacation, personal time for the purposes of calculating overtime. It would probably impact the Highway Department the most, but if it was a blanket change to the personnel policy, I mean, there are others that would impact. For example, the Town Secretary, you know, sometimes has a night, has a selectmen meeting in a week that has a holiday. So, it would not be nearly the same number of hours, but it would still impact that position. And theoretically, it could impact any hourly employees. But the ones that it would impact the most, I think, would be the Highway Department. I don't know that the Fire, right now, the Fire Department only has one full-time hourly worker. I'm not sure that he really works overtime, so I don't know if the impact would be there. And then, as I said, the Town Secretary, there would be some small impact.
What's the federal guidelines for that?
Federal guidelines are our policy, that you are not required to pay overtime for hours not worked. We can if we want to, you don't have to.
But in terms of the rule, I thought there was a rule that said if you work more than eight hours, you're...
No, there is no daily overtime.
So, it's a weekly thing?
Weekly, forty hours a week.
So, what happens, like, for instance, Steve's example, there's three, four days, two holidays. One, because there's snow on, like, the Thursday, which is a holiday, what do you do for that?
I believe our policy allows, it's either time and a half or what would end up being double time if you actually had to work on a holiday.
So, if we change the policy to say holidays are included in the population, what would that do to this whole scenario?
So, when I was at my previous employer, we got overtime for everything after our regularly scheduled time to work. So, if I worked past 3:00, it was overtime until the next morning. Holidays are not included, so if I worked Christmas, I got paid my regular eight hours of pay for the holiday, and I just got paid time and a half, like it was overtime. Fourteen eight hours, or, and then... So, I was getting double time and a half for eight hours, and it just went to overtime after that. Which, if, it snowed, well, it snowed, it snowed the week of Veterans Day, so if we worked Veterans Day, it would have just been our eight hours of pay, and then they would have made their eight hours at that point, and then they would have gotten the overtime on that Monday or after that. Because it did, we, the same thing happened Veterans Day too. I just didn't think it was prudent to show you the same thing for the previous week if they could just use one week. Because it happened to us two pay, two pay weeks in a row. Like, that week you saw Peter in, on the Saturday with me, and we were trying to get the stuff ready for the next snowstorm. He didn't get overtime for that.
Okay, so, non-exempt employees who are required to work on a holiday will receive eight hours of holiday pay and their straight time hourly rate for the hours worked on the holiday in addition to their regular rate of pay for the hours worked. So, if you worked eight hours, if you had to work eight hours on a holiday, you'd get sixteen hours of pay for that holiday.
Yes.
Which is less than what Steve just said they got at the state, correct?
Yeah, but John, the state was like, I mean, they didn't count sick time, vacation time, or anything. And I'm not asking for them, just asking for the holiday stuff. The state's like... Above it, it's above and beyond any, anything, like, people normally see.
If we move in this direction, I want to make it blanket though. You know, I don't want to tie it to just the Highway Department.
Well, I don't think you can just single...
That's what I'm saying, I don't want to discriminate at this point. And as far as I'm concerned, if I only limited between November and April, just make it blanket year-round, that people happen to fall into the opportunity, they should be afforded the right.
Yeah, I mean, if you look at what has to happen, you've got to have two, I mean, you know, the, the... Everything that has to happen to put this policy in place, it's not something that's going to occur every, every week of the winter, I'm not sure. So, I agree with you, John. Scott, what do you think?
Yeah, if you include it. How does this go within terms of curtailed operations? How does that fit into this whole thing?
Curtailed operations?
For instance, we have a bad snowstorm. They're out plowing, the town says, "We're closed."
Right.
Does that count as a holiday, or does that count as a...
Only if you wanted to, and I would say no.
No.
I would say no.
Again, previous employer, if they shut down the state government, they used to get rid of non-needed, or non-essential personnel.
Chief?
We're considered essential personnel.
First, I want Steve, Steve and I talked about it. I support his guys getting it. Doesn't affect us a lot, because we already have the people on duty, and when they're working the holiday, they are getting the extra eight hours of pay.
They're already getting it automatically.
Correct. So, it'd be a rarity that I would have to call somebody in for it to happen. But I do support, because it's a tough job that they do, the plowing and everything. And I know some, some departments do overtime after eight. And what that does is, like, say, for instance, if I had an officer who worked three 13-hour days, and then was sick. If they're sick, then they lose their overtime. They shouldn't really be penalized for being sick. So, that's just, I know there's a lot of departments that do it. It's after eight. So, if you put in the extra, and you work those extra shifts because somebody called out sick that day, and you stayed and covered it, and then you, then yourself becomes sick the end of the week, you kind of get penalized for being sick, and now you don't get the overtime that you worked to help out.
Wow. Sounds good. As far as I'm concerned, maybe we can have Julie work up the changes.
I'm going to say I have a draft of the policy, and we can go on it next time.
It looks like it's moving in the positive directions, Steve.
Yep.
Hey, can we ask the finance officer to see? Because you gave us a list of who it affects, possibly. I'm just making sure that it doesn't affect, like, a bunch of people. It sounds like it's a limited number anyways.
Okay. Right-of-way policy?
Yeah. So, I wrote this, I took stuff from a whole bunch of towns in the area that all have right-of-way policies. This was one thing that Randy left a big list for me of stuff that needed to get done, and a mailbox right-of-way policy was number two on his list. So, I came up with this one. I like to, I don't consider it to be final. I kind of figured that it would be picked apart and reworded and stuff like that. So, I kind of wanted your, you know, it got sent to you guys. I was kind of, I wanted to hear what your feedback was on it.
Let's pick.
It's fine.
That's fine. It's the whole purpose of this.
Okay. You want to, want to tell us what the changes are, or...
Well, there aren't any changes. I just wrote the whole thing. I didn't know if you guys...
You wrote a whole new, whole new...
I didn't know if you guys had anything you wanted to add into it.
Okay.
Because this is new to me.
Are we picking?
Go right forth, I've got a thick skin.
Or are we picking?
Well, oh, I want to pick.
Okay.
I want to pick, because there's one thing in there that we're, well, at least I know I'm going to get calls about.
Yep.
The whole issue about permanent mailbox things. Because I don't know, many people on the road that I live on have the granite posts.
Yes.
And I want to hear from you in terms of why you don't like them, but if we tell them, they have to take those down.
Well, I suppose I should add something onto this first. If it's currently sitting where it's sitting, I wasn't going to make anyone move it. It was going to be, your grandfather, if it gets damaged, needs to be replaced, or you need to replace it, it needs to abide by this. The reason I don't like granite post mailboxes is it's an unyielding device, which means if someone hits it, it causes a lot of damage and injury. Technically, things like that aren't allowed to be within right-of-ways of road because if someone hits them, and then... So, if someone hits it and gets hurt, it's the homeowner's responsibility and their insurance to deal with the injuries should someone come after them. They break equipment if we do hit them. I don't, most granite mailboxes, they stick at the right height. In a lot of developments, they're at the right height, but they're way too close to the road in this town that I've seen, and they really need to get pushed back. But, I just, I don't, I don't believe they're safe, I never have.
Does the post office have requirement? I know they have requirements for height, but do they have requirements for how far?
They don't have requirements for setbacks. But if you're going to put a mailbox in that's not at the correct height, and the face of it's even with the edge of pavement, you're going to have conflict. Because you have to be able to get the snow off the edge of pavement, or you're going to get refreeze and melt into the road, which creates cracks, potholes, and roadway deterioration.
Now, the comment on this, how the right-of-way is a little bit different too, but every road has a different right-of-way.
Yeah, correct.
So, some of the old roads just don't have...
Some of the roads have right-to-pass. But like, if you drive down Carlin Road, every mailbox on Carlin Road is decent. It's mostly the developments that have between a 50 and a 60-foot right-of-way.
Okay.
Steve sent this to me, I read it, I thought it looked okay. I know I had an issue when I lived in Barrington. My mailbox kept getting whacked. And it was actually a friend of mine who plowed for the town of Barrington. I saw him one day, I'm like, "Hey, stop hitting my mailbox." He said, "Move your mailbox." So, I put it where he told me it needed to be, and never hit again.
Like, I had a complaint, someone called and said we hit their mailbox these last couple storms. I went out and looked at it, and the face of the mailboxes even with the edge of pavement, and you can see where the plow was off the edge of pavement, getting the snow off, drove around it, misjudged it, and then came back in. And the mailbox was only 31 inches off the ground.
And it was too low?
It was too low, and it's too close to the edge of the road.
And what's our policy been with damaged mailboxes? Have we paid for them?
Randy has gone and fixed them, and then not fixed them, and then there really hasn't been one, from what I can tell.
Mine, every first storms of the year, the heavy wet ones, being right off 125, well, you know, mine gets sent, the heavy wet snow just hits it and sends it. And I, you know, I reinforce it and still sends it, so I just wait. Because once it's a regular snowstorm, it's okay, but it's part of winter.
When the plow trucks go down there 45, 50 miles an hour, and that slush becomes a projectile and just...
It's fine. So, I mean, it's part of winter in New England.
See what happens if you leave your mailbox open and that happens? It dries, and it freezes, and then you...
Yep.
You don't do that.
That's the state.
Well, the other...
We don't go 45 miles an hour. The best ones are mounted on a car, so pretty anyway.
Oh, yeah, with the dangle, they go back. Well, that's pretty good. So, if someone calls you about, calls you up about placement for your mailbox, would you provide support?
Yeah, I'd help, I'd go out and help them. The best place to put it's on the downside of your driveway. And then you clean out above your driveway, and most of the snow will go in the driveway or in the opening you make, and then you don't have the issue. Obviously, you get five feet of snow, and then people don't shovel their mailboxes out, then we're at a different situation. But, you know, if they abide by this, and they're off the road, and then we still start hitting them, then that's a different story. Because if you abide by this, we shouldn't hit them. So, if wind contact occurs and we hit them, then I'll obviously fix them.
Is there any legal issue with this, Julie?
I would probably want to run this by legal, just because I know that it, I don't think it's an absolute that we own 25, as you said, 25 feet.
We don't, we don't own anything.
Well, right.
We have the right to maintain it.
Yeah. So, I would just want to run this one by legal, just to make sure there's no...
Then, the other part I put in it, because it's right-of-way, is 90% of this was mailboxes, because that's usually the complaints we get. I did a part about people's lawns, because Thurston Woods has shrubbery and bark mulch and everything right up to the edge of pavement. And, I mean, it's winter in New England. We have to get the snow off the edge of pavement. And if you're going to take the risk, and, I'm not saying people can't put it there. If they want to put it there, that's fine. But I don't think, if they're going to take the risk in planting it there, that everyone else should be responsible for repairing it.
We could put it, I mean, just as a recommendation in the policy, right?
Yes. And I, I wrote that it shouldn't go there, but if we do hit it, we're not responsible. And then, there, I tried to give them a way to appeal it. If they feel extensive amounts have been damages occurred due to us plowing snow, a report can be sent for repair consideration. So, I gave them an appeal process. I mean, obviously, I put a wing six feet off the edge of the road, whipped it one up, is one thing. I screw up to be the couple, the foot and a half, two feet next to the road.
So, we can get, get the legal review, and then hopefully, next, next meeting, we can implement this one.
And if you want to take where I said no granite post mailboxes out of it, that's fine. I'm just...
If they...
You know, I just put it in because I didn't like them. First of all, well, if you go to the top of Alderoz Board, and there's two granite post mailboxes directly across from each other that are too low, and the face of the granite post is on the edge of pavement...
So, let me ask you this question.
Yes, sir.
If the mailbox with the granite post was installed properly, with the height, crack height, and the crack distance from the road, would you still have a problem with it? If they were installed properly?
No. The only thing is, is if, just someone hits them, it's an unyielding device. Because if you put anything bigger than a four-by-four in the ground to hold your mailbox, you're supposed to drill holes in it so it can break away if someone hits it. Granite post, you really can't put a hole in for it to break off.
So, I agree, let's have Julie take a look at the legal, but also, like you said, people that already have existing...
Yeah, I just, I didn't, wasn't sitting here trying to...
Would any mailpost, any mailposts installed after, right? Certain day, or a month, or...
Yeah, I'm not, I wasn't going to sit here and try to make it, everyone needs to go out there right now with post hole diggers and move everything back. That's not...
Not going to happen.
No, it's not going to happen, and it's not like, it's not anything that I would even expect.
Looks good.
Okay. What's the, what's the... Can I, can I ask a question in terms of, this, this is a lot of, you know, I don't know if this is an ordinance, but what's the ramifications? Okay, we sell people this. Okay, I'm going to put out my mailbox, and it's going to be right on the pavement. What is the town going to do about that? Is there, what's the...
So, supposedly, the planning board already has something that's an ordinance, that it's supposed to be back off the edge of pavement.
So, is there a fine associated with this? I don't, I'm, this is the question.
I don't know. I know, I'm still on them roads. There's a new development they're putting in off Hayes Road. And they're like, all newer houses, and all those mailboxes are too close to the road. And I know they've been talked to about it before, but they're still there.
I'm just thinking in terms of, what's the town's, you know, all that?
I think this is more to educate people that this is where your mailboxes should be, and this is why. And just understand, if your mailbox is in the wrong place and not high enough, we're definitely, we're definitely... It's subject to damage, and we're definitely going to repair or replace it.
So, essentially, the town's response, if they do put it too close, is, and we knock it over. You didn't follow the things. And, like I said, obviously, you put it so the face of the mailbox is two feet off the edge of pavement, and we go out there and knock your mailbox over, break your granite post off, that's a different thing. There's zero reason. A truck with a wing should be two and a half, three feet off the edge of pavement, because all you're going to do at that point...
So, if the plow truck hits the granite pylon, is the damage a plow truck?
Sometimes. Wing arms, pistons.
So, it's also damage to the town materials?
Yep.
There's a little bit of spring in it, but not very much, right?
There's some.
Not a whole lot.
I sense this looks good. Once the lawyer goes by it, we should be in good position.
Okay.
So, we'll proceed in two weeks.
That's fine.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks, Steve. Julie Glover, Town Administrator.
So, you may recall, we discussed at the last meeting about, she's exploring the possibility of moving voting to Massey School. So, I reached out to Dr. Morse. He's going to bring it to the select, to his...
School board.
School board, thank you. And it was an S in the board. He's going to bring it to the school board, but they did question whether we just meant the November election date, because school is closed that day. But, for example, the date in March is not closed. So, I said, "Well, for right now, let's just call it for November date, and we'll, we'll go from there."
Because you also have the primary in September, too.
Right, right. But as I think I mentioned, there was some talk amongst the managers of maybe bringing something forward at the state level to somehow deal with this, and have it be a, I don't know, state law that all the schools close? I don't know how they would do that, but... But it's, I guess I'm saying it's not just a problem for us. It's a problem for people that do use the schools, and the schools don't close. Then it's a really big problem.
So, what does Durham do? They must have closed down the high school, that kind of...
Yeah, they use the high school.
But they closed, do they close the high school on primary day in March?
I know they just did for the November election. I'm not sure what they do for the other days. But, on a tangentially related matter to that, I received an email from Todd Selig this afternoon that he is exploring with the Oyster River School District when they build their new middle school, possibly keeping the existing gymnasium, maybe some locker rooms, a classroom, restrooms, and having that available for the town of Durham. And so, he sent it to myself and Eric in Madberry to see whether we would have any interest in possibly exploring this with them. I mean, obviously, there'd be costs associated with this. I mean, even if it's a dollar lease, you might lease it from the school district for a dollar, for 20 years. The town or towns that would be utilizing this space would have to pay for the renovations, because I think what he's imagining is they're going to knock down everything else and keep this portion for community space. So, he's just exploring the idea, and he's just throwing it out there to see whether we would have any interest in sharing with it. I mean, obviously, I think it makes sense for Durham, because it's in Durham.
It's the oldest part, right? The one on the corner?
Uh, he didn't distinguish that, he just said "the gymnasium."
Oh, oh? The current gymnasium?
Yeah, the existing gymnasium.
Not the old part?
That's different.
What, what, I mean, go to your, your area. What does the TCVC, what does that building bring in terms of solvency when it's ready? Anything?
Durham?
No, not Durham. I mean, does the, if we...
Oh, if you go to the Massey School?
No. After you build a new building?
Yep.
Okay, does it offer anything in terms of space that would help solve this problem?
Not bigger than West Ham Springs. The only thing is, one of the, I don't know who's got it now, but... The addition that we're, not, it's not part of this project, but possible addition, then, that, you could use that for the poking and stuff. Because we're looking at about 2,400 square feet, which is bigger than downstairs. Downstairs is...
1301.
That's almost over.
But then you could have more than, because downstairs, I know, is tight, because there's requirements in terms of voting booths and stuff based on your population as we start to get larger. Because I think they're tight now, and I don't know how they do it, but as you get larger, you need more space, so... But that's, that particular expansion is not part of this particular project at this time, but you can always do it afterwards, but... Will you recognize the police chief?
Yeah, I recognize him. How can you miss him? Look at his hand up there.
I don't, I don't want to talk out of turn, you know, with Scott, not being the chief nem, but can we use the fire base one year when it was really busy?
I thought we did.
I think we did.
Yeah, yeah. That's a lot of room. I, I seem to remember one year using the base.
I think you're right.
Well, part of the issue, though, of course, is if you do have a fire or a police action or something, you got all, the trucks are outside and everything. That's part of the issue that's being discussed about... About last night, you know, having everybody downstairs. And then all the cars around even trying to keep in control.
I mean, if it's gonna, if it has to be here.
Yeah.
You know, there's a lot of room.
That's true.
Even if you just used one of the bays.
Right.
Having come in this way and out that way.
But you're right, that does not resolve parking issue.
Yes.
And it doesn't resolve the emergency response issue.
So I think we should at least look into November and see where it goes from there.
Okay.
It's just an opportunity to have a consideration. In the end, if we decide not to use it, we don't have to.
Well, the thing is then you get people confused. Where am I going this year?
Right.
And you have people showing up.
Denise standing out there going like this.
With blinking sign, with those little sandwiches. Yes, yes, I like this already.
Oh, brother, we're going downhill, babe.
Oh, speaking of blinking, are we gonna have an update on the blinking sign?
Yeah, whenever I can get that done.
The blinking sign.
Ready?
The SEC property?
So, the NHCUCC Executive Board approved the partial release of the right of reversion, partial because they're not selling us all the property. Um, and now they have to work on the bank and a partial release of the mortgage. So we are certainly making progress. We are still aiming for a December fourteenth, um, closing date. So, that's, that's all that we know right now. The bank's attorneys are still working on getting everything done that needs to be done. I, I thought I had read that they already took care of the mortgage.
It's my understanding as well, cause Ben said he worked with the mortgage company to get the release from the mortgage company and I was...
This is from their attorney, so, yeah. Maybe just a matter of signing off, finally signing off on it. So you may have noticed in the agenda packet that we're issuing the check for purchase, assuming that everything's gonna be a go and certainly that we will close because we're supposed to close per the purchase and sales by the end of the year. So given that, I'm just asking if the board would grant me authority to execute any further documents that might need to be executed. And then add the date of the closing so that we can go forward with closing on the property.
So will inter motion move to grant authority to the town administrator to execute closing documents for the purchase of the lead church congregational property?
Second.
Hold in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. And obviously I'll keep it posted, uh, once they confirm the closing date.
Okay, on a happier note, the burials agreement.
So, late today I received some comments from Randy Stevens on the draft agreement. Asking whether there's gonna be a fee assessed by the town for laying out, um, and associated paperwork. My response to him was that's up to the trust cemetery trustees because they are responsible for that.
That's on a full burial?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. Yes. Although, I mean, it would be true for cremations. I mean, you still...
But that was in there, is that...
You still have to, no, they wanted it to go... No, not a fee. He's talking about a fee.
Oh, but I thought there was a fee associated with cremations in that document.
There's a fee associated with cremations.
Actually doing it.
Doing it.
Oh.
We've never charged a fee to the best of my knowledge for doing layout.
Oh, okay.
But I, I, I believe that's gonna be up to the cemetery trustees.
Up to the cemetery trustees.
And then he just asked whether we were going to have firms that would be pre-approved to do the digging for this, for the funeral homes. I said we could certainly come up with a list. And then I get inserted in there that, um, diggings for cremations could be performed by a funeral home if that's what the family wanted to do. And he just offered some comment on that was whether that was the intention. And yes, and I guess I don't mean necessarily the funeral home itself does the digging. Maybe he was confused, but because maybe a family that they just wanna go to the funeral home and that's all they want to do. So...
Have the trustees seen that?
I emailed to them and I heard back from Mary Ann Banks that said, looks good. So...
Keep that email.
So does the board have any suggested changes or anything else they wanna see in here? I tried to keep it simple.
Just in terms, I assume Randy's comment was forwarded to the cemetery trustees as well?
Uh, I did, but I can't.
Uh, just for their...
Yeah, yeah. I don't think he copied them on it.
Cause that should probably be in the, cause it's the SOP, so if that's gonna be their procedure, it should be in there as well, if they're gonna charge.
Yeah.
I would think they would want to charge something for both types.
Right.
Because if Randy and/or somebody has to be involved from the town side
Yeah.
to do something, we don't do it for free.
Steve, do you have a question?
Yeah, I got a question. Last week I got a phone call from a funeral home in Massachusetts wanting to know about pre-arranging a burial in the cemetery in it. I don't know what to tell them. Cause they're asking, is there a fee for layout? How much does the town charge to dig? At this point, we hadn't, we left the last meeting and didn't really have concrete plans. I, so I tried calling her back and we've been playing phone tag, but like she had just mentioned, pre-approved people that can dig in the, in the cemetery and stuff like that. I don't know what to tell the lady.
Well, first, we don't charge a fee because we don't charge fee. If the cemetery trustees adopt one, then we can certainly pass that information along. I think we have a list of people that we would like or would accept doing the digging. We can put that together.
What's the timeline of this request?
It's a pre-arrangement, so I'm not assuming they've passed yet, but they were asking about opening in the winter. And all that other stuff. So I don't know if it's close. I haven't gotten that much information. I just, cause where Randy was still on the fence about stuff. I haven't talked to a single person on the cemetery trustees, so I don't even know what to, to add to them. So I was kinda like...
Well, I mean, and we certainly, we don't, we wouldn't be doing any burials now, so we can just, when you get ahold of them again, tell them we're working out a new procedure and we can let them know when the cemetery trustees have signed off on this.
Cause what they're trying to figure out is how much to tell the family.
Sure.
It's gonna cost.
Sure.
So...
Well, we're gonna circulate that to the trustees and get a yea or nay, or they already have it.
Well, they already have it.
They said it looked good.
Well, love did.
So we have to, well, you have to assume she talked to somebody.
Okay, but I guess so the board doesn't have any issues with the document?
Looks good to me.
I will take the word draft off it, send it to the cemetery trustees, let them know that you discussed it, you don't have any issues with it. And to please have them vote to accept it and sign it and...
Along with Randy's comment?
Yeah.
Cause they probably haven't seen that yet.
Yeah. And then go from there.
Next meeting, well, they could follow.
Well, I'd be surprised if I could bring this back at the next meeting, but...
You can take a chance.
We'll tell them we've got bodies stacking up out there. Nobody heard that, did they?
Luckily it's cold. Miscellaneous?
Uh, no, I'm all set. I talked about Mr. Selig's email.
Okay. Make a motion to accept the concern agenda as presented. Second, we can ask a question about E. Okay. Poll license?
Poll license? There wasn't too much information about, pretty good. Some high road next to the Genesis kind of across from, see you guys?
Yeah.
Across from, um, Bedrock Gardens. But what do they, did they put in a new poll? Is it...
That's usually what they're doing when they send us a poll license.
So, didn't say what it was for and...
Well, it's not, it's not like that other one where there was so much discussion because it was on town property.
Yeah.
This is actually, we, we, we issued these and signed these.
Okay, I just didn't...
All the time.
I would think, why would they put in a new poll? There's no new house there or...
They do this.
It was just a question?
I don't know. They do. I could, I could ask them, but they do this all the time.
Okay, that's fine. So it's business as usual?
Business as usual.
Okay.
Yep.
No discussion.
Okay. Hold in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yep, John seconded.
Yep.
So, we have the motion to enter in a non-public session.
Sign all that stuff. We gotta sign all that stuff first.
I know. I was gonna pass it through. We still...
Oh, you still make the motion? Yeah, we gotta sign it before we make the motion. I know you love signing. Do you like everyone? Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas. You're coming on Wednesday, Larry?
I'll be there. Nice thing.
See that?
What do we got for food?
Uh, some Italian thing.
Anything on the meat?
I don't know.
If it's good, I'm not allowed to eat it.
I don't know. Denise knows. What's on the menu on Wednesday? Some Italian?
Italian.
There's wine. Can you drink wine?
Yes.
Okay, so I'll bring it up there. You can have a liquid dinner.
Liquid enjoy it.
This is Toby's.
December third.
Third? Excuse me.
That's Toby's thing, isn't it?
Yeah.
Yep.
Finished?
Um, yes.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to enter in a non-public session for NHRS A ninety-one height and a code of three-two A. Second. No call vote, Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Phil Brown, yes.
This is definitely a call.
Nothing to see with it.
I'd like to make a motion, go turn. And just, I don't know if you wanna have to have a miscellaneous?
I guess he wants to have yours miscellaneous.
Um, well, most of you have seen it.
Yeah.
There is a sample floor plan and also in terms of the site plan. So, um, there'll be a presentation next Monday at six thirty. The Dallas Pressinger will be doing the presentation and the town supervision committee will be there. So, um, questions, concerns? That's the time for us to hear them, but this'll give you at least a preview or very look at the particular.
And you'll get us a copy so I can share it with town clerk tax collector and...
Yeah, oh, yeah, we can do that. Well, I can get copies of these.
Planning and zoning?
If you want. Well, it's today.
I can do that.
How about if you take those?
Yeah.
Scan them.
Yeah.
And then leave them in the box.
Okay.
Okay? Cause then you can share them with, cause you need to share them, if you could please, with, um, Karen Rossi?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
And those people?
Yes.
The library already has it.
Okay.
So... And the thing basically just, I don't know if you, I don't know if you wanna confuse them, but it's the second one for the new municipal building. And it's the second one for the library and then the town hall.
Yeah.
So don't. And just beware, one of the things on the second one for the municipal building, they're tweaking.
Yeah. They're moving things around.
Yeah, the first one, we're taking this, the configuration of the town clerk tax collector and putting it into number two. So it keeps all of her stuff together. But looking in terms of flow, the other thing, just in terms of, these are preliminary.
Mm-hmm.
So it's not like this is how it is, like it or leave it. This at least gives people an idea of what is possible. And then going forward, if we go to the next stage, that's when we go to, Denise doesn't wanna be right next to her boss. She wants, you know, then we can play with things a little bit. Did I live out anything, John?
Uh, no, but, um, while you were in there, I just heard a lot of new, um, comments and faults found with option two, some things that we
Okay.
hadn't talked about.
Okay.
It's good information.
It really is, I mean, it is a process that needs a whole lot more time.
Quicker we get it out to all the different departments throughout your life?
Well, at least they'll see it beforehand so they can escape. Just the only thing in terms of municipal building is the town clerks. It's kinda like, so just make her aware of that.
Yeah.
Oh, and the other thing is we took out, um, the building maintenance. There's a...
Yes.
So that's, that's gone.
But, and the second bathroom got added in its place. So there'd be two staff bathrooms.
Yep.
And by having two staff bathrooms, that allows the public bathrooms to be a little smaller.
Right. So then you guys can go do your business without having the public in there doing...
Well, there's always gonna be one.
Whatever it is they do in there.
Whatever they do in there.
Yeah, that sort of thing, so...
Um, but he'll, they'll also give us the budget for that particular thing. And, um, I think that's, that's it.
Yeah, we have basis of design summary, um, which is twelve pages long, twelve pages of detail that we just received today.
Yeah, we haven't even looked at this.
Well, we had a chance to look through a little bit of it, um, and, and say, what's this curbing material, granite, six inch reveal? There's not supposed to be granite curbs. So take that out. What are these parking bumpers, continuous granite curbs? Take that out. So we found those two. There may be many others in this twelve pages.
Gotta look through in detail.
The other thing we're gonna do is, this particular document, and I think John volunteered, but I will speak for him. In terms of this parking layout, pass this by Steve and see what his thoughts are.
Absolutely.
To try and make it easier to plow. The other thing is now that they put in the septic system and also the cistern and stuff, so...
And going back to the fire chief and the cistern.
Getting his comments. So that's one of the things that, um, when Ben Jeans had his friend anecdotal comment, that's one of the things that he was impressed with. that's one of the things that he was impressed with it. We actually went and talked to those particular people about the design and make sure they're okay with it. So.
I'm good.
You're good?
Wednesday, six o'clock, right?
Wednesday, six o'clock.
From here, appreciation dinner.
And next Monday at 6:30.
6:30 here is the presentation. How many people coming to Wednesday?
Sixty-five.
So we had room to spare?
Yeah. I will be coming back from New York on December 10th. I expect and am planning to be here by 6:30, but if something happens, all Denise know.
No problem.
There's somebody to record it.
If I'm here.
What do you mean if you're here?
Did you make the motion to adjourn?
No, we're still on the floor.
Make a motion to adjourn.
It's already on the floor.
So it's already on the floor. Somebody said.
We're discussing. I, I second, we're discussing it.
You can't discuss it in judgment.
That's right. So nondiscussable.
Nondiscussable, non-discussable? Is that what you said?
I have a doctorate. I can do my damn well, please.
You're a fit and you can get with nondiscussable?
I'll call, I call the question.
Oh, can I?
Am I on board?
Oh, can I ask what's your name?
Did we actually vote to adjourn?
No, that's why I called the question.
You wanted to vote to adjourn.
Yes, I want to.
Okay, we had to speak about when we're going to have the department heads come in for evaluations. Are we doing that on the 17th?
I think in order to fit it into the budget schedule, you have to.
Which means we haven't really discussed that.
That's correct.
So maybe we can spend a few minutes after on the 10th?
Yes.
So how about if you schedule us a non-public on the 10th?
After the presentation.
After the presentation to discuss personnel issues. And that time, I think what we did last year is we talked about things. I transcribed them and then sent them out.
Yes.
And then at the next meeting, we had a conversation with them.
Exactly.
Does that work?
Works for me.
And so the 17th, have you ever, all the department heads?
Seventeen is evaluations for all the departments. So we need a personnel, um, public on that evening as well.
It's a busy night.
For a week coming today.
That's the racetrack helping carry man. It's a busy night already.
That's the ABC presentation as well.
I was going to say, what is that?
ABC presentation.
Seventeen.
Seventeen.
We think we know this. It's busy and something.
Nothing we can do about it.
Yep.
It's probably going to snow many ways over.
Were you adjourned yet?
Not yet.
Oh, they called for the vote.
I adjourned you a long time ago.
Listen, I called for the motion.
What, what'd you do now?
I called for the motion.
All those in favor?
Emotion.
Aye.
All those opposed, type.
Motion carries.